All right, we are going to call the zoning board of appeals meeting to order on January 15th, 7:00 PM. Limited agenda here today. And the first thing on it is approving the meeting minutes from our last meeting of November 22nd. Any comments or questions about the minutes?
They look fantastic.
Katie did a good job.
Fantastic.
Does anyone want to make a motion to approve them?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as drafted.
One second.
Dave, you ready?
I'm ready.
All in favor? Aye? Okay. Moving right along, the next thing we have here is a, it says interview, it's really just more of a chat, with Doris Cahill, who has been appointed by the board of selectmen as our first alternate.
Fantastic.
Doris, if you want to sit up at one of the things so you can use a microphone. As you'll, as you'll learn, using a microphone is very important, as we're on TV over there.
Okay.
And, so it should be on, but, folks, I had a chance to-
It's on.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I had a chance to talk to Doris before the selectmen's meeting. And had a nice conversation about her background and her work experience. And in fact, she's lived in town for 20 some odd years or so. And just where she can and will be a good asset for us. And so, I will kind of defer, since I've already done this, but feel free to ask her questions. And Doris, why don't you start and just tell us a little bit about your background and who you are and stuff? And we'll just go from there.
Okay, so, it's safe to assume no one knows my background at all, or, okay, is that it? Yes, affirmative.
Well, we did get your form.
Actually, no, we did get a whole-
We did get the form that you filled out.
Get a whole write-up thing, so.
All right, yeah, so just kind of starting point. So, I have, from a professional perspective, I have about a 33-year background of work career. I'm a certified public accountant in both Massachusetts and Connecticut. I have a long tenure in, in public accounting, about 10 years. And then, from there, I did entrepreneurial work at a company for about 15 years, which I sold about seven or eight years ago. And I predominantly worked professionally with architectural, engineering, as well as some of my family businesses, my family business to this day, which is in Connecticut. I'm from Connecticut. I have a family, I have two grown daughters, 30 and 27, went through the school system here. I have been winding my career down since I sold my company. I was on a non-compete for a few years, continued to consult predominantly in accounting, not just tax, but job cost accounting. Working in some pretty large, medium-sized and small mom-and-pop engineering and architectural firms, predominantly in Boston, but nationally, more Boston than nationally. And I would be very close to just about any kind of project. So, a pretty good understanding of, you know, work tasks. I have a very good understanding of phasing and tasking and change order. All the terms, I'm pretty familiar with looking at blueprints. Wouldn't say I'm an expert. So, I have a good comfort level with that, from a business perspective, as well as a planning perspective. Then, after that, I volunteered, I just got back from US Peace Corps, which people like to hear about sometimes. I spent two years, three months in the Republic of Georgia. I was chosen to work in economic development with predominantly agrotourism and businesses, various small businesses, advertising. And I have some accomplishments and a pretty in-depth record with the US Peace Corps, kind of what I did overseas. I backgrounded in from US Peace Corps, grant writing, budget writing, to help kickstart initiatives. Because it's a supposed Soviet country with particular cultural differences in the United States. They want to become more democratic. And Peace Corps is independent from the US Embassy and their efforts over there. But they, we often align. And I worked on a USAID project, which most people are familiar with USAID. So, I worked on a very large project activity with USAID. I worked with the economically, the poor, there we go. I worked with a lot of poor people, I worked with women, I worked with youth, developed skills. Came back, I'm bilingual. And I was never bilingual, because I came back bilingual, because you have to speak a secondary language. So, that was one of my accomplishments that I enjoyed the most, the most difficult, but I enjoyed learning a second language very late in life. I volunteered in town extensively before I went to US Peace Corps. And I don't even know if that's on my fill-out application. But I've done a variety, a very low level, just helping, if someone needed help, I'd go ahead and do it. I don't know if you have questions for me?
Yeah.
I think I'm pretty easy to get on with, and I've seen a lot. I've seen a lot in life.
Yeah, I think that's a good, a good introduction.
Yeah.
And then I'll just let you folks ask some questions, if you have any, or-
Connecticut, huh?
Yeah.
So, are you a Yankees fan or a Red Sox fan?
Yeah, so that's a really excellent question, yeah.
And I have a follow-up question to that, too.
Right, right. So, I was on the border of Danbury, Danbury, Connecticut's where I was born, until I came to Boston after UConn, I went to University of Connecticut. I'm just, this is terrible, I'm not a sports fan.
All right, I'll let that slide then.
Okay, that's my little slide.
The follow-up was, are you a Giants or a Patriots fan?
Yeah, but I have, I have a sister who's a sports buff. And I know which way she aligns, but we still, we still get along. So, don't wear that up here.
And do you still speak to her?
Oh, yeah, I still see, I still speak with my sister, goodness gracious. But she can, she's really good at stats. Yeah, so, and a golfer.
Hi, and thank you for coming forward and being an alternate, which we really do need and we really, really appreciate. But we all have a lot of fun here, so I'm glad that you've joined us as well.
Yeah, fun, it's easier.
We do have fun.
Oh, I was having a ton of fun a couple of years ago.
That looked fun.
Barrel laughs.
I was like, I can't wait to get on that board.
He was excited for those meetings.
My question, so, since you've, you've been back from the Peace Corps, you decided you wanted to join a board or committee?
I did, yeah.
I'm just wondering, why EZBA, or did you think about other, other boards also?
I did look at one other board. And it was actually a competition for position. And they were very qualified. So, I looked at, Aspet Valley had a, an opening for youth advisement on the school committee. Not a school committee board member, but an advisor to it. And I had interest in that, because I've always been interested in development, development of youth or development of businesses. And this specifically, because I feel pretty attached to some of the things I've gone through with my family over the years, developing, getting a non-conforming zone change. So, I, you know, I think I know what that feels like and, and what those specific issues are with non-conforming properties, that can be 100 years old. And I've worked with architects and engineers, so I thought I could suit it, and I can read code. I've read, read some of the, the code here. I read a lot of IRS code. And I'm, I think I'm an advocate, yeah, you know, I'm an advocate. So, to, to read it, to do what's right and do what's legal. So, I think I could bring that asset. I'm pretty young still, I think I'm pretty young. Got a couple of years left in me without flying. I, I'm a million mile flyer, so I want to stay grounded, I'm trying to stay grounded.
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is one of the things that I, I'd noticed when I talked to Doris before, is, you know, the, the cross between a CPA and their level of needing to understand codes and rules and regulations and the zoning code and rules and regulations, and kind of that cross of really understanding how important following and, and, you know, using the, the code to guide the decision, I thought was a good, good match for her background.
Right. And your, your, your background, as far as being connected to it, is, is as really a contractor for different firms, correct? You weren't necessarily aligned with one primarily? Was it just a host of different-
That's a really good question. So, aligned with different firms, no. I would consider the company I had, I had about 10 to 15 employees of all 15 years. And we were moving as consultants and teams of consultants, sometimes there'd be five or 10 other people on the project work. And it was really for the client, although they may be on a GovCon contract, we were not contracted by, by the government.
You were contracted by the-
By the client.
By the client, yeah.
The client would contract us to be able to typically solve a specific accounting matter or put integrated accounting systems or database issues related to projects. So, they can account back to the government, excuse me. So, they could account for the, to the government every stage of a contract. That's quite complicated kind of consulting work, very niche, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm just, I guess I'm just clarifying, like, is there one in particular? Or, it sounds like it was broad-based. You provided services, depending on what the level of work was.
Yeah, it was very broad-based. I do have some difficulty explaining that, in my tenure having the company, we had about 800 projects that ran through that company. It would be 40 projects in a year, that's a lot of volume. And that was predominantly serving accounting, serving database, the computer technology work, traveling through the country to resolve a whole host of accounting issues that would delay the functioning of the company. You know, they would have a cash flow problem, and that could be a very systematic issue, not a personnel issue. So, we'd be in for the systematic part of it.
So, do you have much familiarity with, you know, zoning hearings, or not, not necessarily?
I wouldn't say my day-to-day was zoning hearings, hearings at all. My experience with zoning hearings has specifically to do with family business activities in, in the state of Connecticut, needing to know that and engage architects and survey engineers and-
So, we had family that might have been more-
I'm still in it, my father passed nine years ago. And I still run rental properties where I was born.
Okay.
Okay, so, so that the interest i- is in that. You know, the interest in that, the interest in the town.
Right, right.
And I hope I can serve well. Yeah, no, that's a good question, they're all good questions.
No, I'm just, very briefly, I'm just so thankful you stepped forward to volunteer. We really appreciate you stepping forward. It really, you can fog a mirror and you're a woman.
Okay, yeah, definitely.
Those are two pluses.
We need, we need alternates. And so, I, I say that tongue-in-cheek, but you're more than qualified. I love your background from an academic perspective. It's always really important to me to read the bylaws, the statutes, and so that we have a familiarity and a fair working understanding of those regulations moving forward. And so, in all sincerity, I'm really thankful you stepped forward and just, we just need one more alternate.
We do.
Great, thanks again.
Yeah.
Thanks, I really, I'm looking forward to it. This is a change, it's something I want to be more governmental. When I went to Peace Corps, I started to go in that direction, get away from private. Thought that better answered your question. I mean, 30 years of private, you can imagine.
Yeah.
You see a lot, you know, you see a lot. It's good, but it, it's just a change. And that started with Peace Corps being more, more understanding how nonprofit NGO mentality, the way they work within their units. And private is, private is really a day-to-day-
Right.
It's a day-to-day thing.
Yeah, like Mike said, it is, the background's impressive, and we certainly are appreciative to have somebody-
No, so definitely, thank you.
I like to laugh. And I am a bit of a risk-taker, just a heads up.
Okay.
Okay?
Works for us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks so much.
So, you've already been appointed by the board of selectmen, have you been sworn in through the-
Yes, yeah, at the, at the meeting, I asked what else I needed to do. I met with Jim Hagerty. He swore me in.
Did he give you a book?
Oh, yeah, he gave me-
Okay, good.
He gave me the book, and he took it with him.
How come Debbie's got a book?
Oh, we all got books.
Yeah, well, there was a reason for the books, I believe, yeah, yeah, got books.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, in the past, as a board, we have, hey, Jim?
My idea is we're recording, I'm blocking out town's kids, who you guys didn't pick up your books.
That would be me.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Jim. Thanks, Jim.
I must have missed them.
So, off-camera, that was Jim Hagerty, town clerk, alerting us that two of our members had not picked up their code of the Town of Southborough books, and he is going to bring them for us.
That's great.
So, in the past, it's just been typically the, the five main members, or whoever is sitting up here at the table. And I think Mike brought up the idea that the alternates should be up here, too. I think during hearings, you are going to be involved in hearing it and listening to it and asking questions. It's just when it comes time to vote, unless you're officially sitting, because one of us is absent, or one of us has a conflict or something along those lines, you just don't get a vote. But you're, you're up here and seeing all the things we do and are able to ask questions the same as we are.
That's going to work well, considering I don't have the experience. And there's going to be a chance where likely someone's going to be absent.
So-
Get to participate, and you just tell me.
No, that's great. So, with that, have a seat. We have one last thing on the agenda tonight.
Come on up, you're sworn in.
Or two.
So, the other, the other alternate?
Oh, well, we can all scooch down a little bit, yeah, it'll, it'll work.
We'll, we'll make it work.
Um, do we have-
Don't touch the button under the-
Copy of the zoning check that we called down there.
That's a panic button down, in case something gets unruly.
Okay, well, there's no one here.
Um, yeah.
So, with that, we're going to move on to the next item?
Yeah, I, you sent that to me, right?
Yeah.
And I copied the code sections that I needed out of the book in the, in the modification.
All right.
I think I'm good, unless I'm missing something.
Is it good?
Okay, okay.
Excuse me.
Is that maybe yours?
Or somebody's? So, I think we're good, however it works.
Thanks, Katie.
So, next on our agenda is to discuss the proposed zoning bylaw change. This is something that occurred as an offshoot of a, an application that got pulled at our last meeting for Newton Street, Newton Road, Newton Street, I think. Forget if it's street or whatever. But there was some conflict in our existing code, from one section to the next, as to what you could and couldn't do without having to get a new special permit or variance. The language that's being changed in here is to make that clearer. The intent of it is to give more rights to the homeowners in their ability to reconstruct structures associated with their house that might be non-conforming, existing non-conforming from times before we had zoning, or that zoning has changed. So, the process, from what I understand, is that officially, we as a board are putting the change request forward for town meeting. But the planning board is required to host all the meetings and go through the process of vetting it and airing it with, with the town. Not sure why we got picked to be the ones officially presenting it, but we are. So, with that being said, we have two coffees, one as it is now, one that is lined. It's not redlined, because there's no color copying. Oh, that's all right, Jim.
Oh, thank you, Jim.
So, we can go through and, and look at where the, the changes have occurred. What you'll see is that most of them revolve around reconstruction or other structure, otherwise structural change. And really what that is, the Newton Street one affected a deck and a roof. Roof needed to be replaced due to rot and not needing, not being able to maintain, as well as the deck. And consequently, it needed to be adapted for better rain flow and things of that nature. So, it was, it was that combination of it being reconstructed and also changed for structural and better building purposes that made it confusing. So, you'll see that that language has been added, because it wasn't there before. So, and it gets added in the, in the various areas and what you can and can't do. And it's really kind of the same, same change being, being brought forward.
So, it's really just a clarification, is the way I'm reading it.
It is a clarification. It also, I believe this can, this follows state building code better as well.
But it, it also, what's the, in the, in the first paragraph, the line, "No special permits under the subsection shall be granted for non-conforming signs, subject to chapter 93 or 93D of the general laws," is crossed out entirely, so, there is a little bit more.
Pardon? Oh, you worked with, fantastic.
So, I worked with Sarah on planning on that part. We kind of collaborated a little bit for language. And those sections of the law have nothing to do with zoning anymore, so it was, it's just not relevant.
So, they're just no longer relevant, okay, thank you. It also appears it's making it very clear in 174-19 by saying, and anything not listed in the subsections, they don't, they didn't necessarily refer specifically to it before. So, it does, that just seems like a, well, there's, there is four now, we used to just be three. But it's still, it's not, it's not really substantial, any of it, it's all-
It's, it's a clarification, yeah.
Does a lawyer agree? I do, I, I, I had reviewed this. To me, the, I see the basis as to why. It's really kind of, it's, so, I'm, I was really more mindful of the third, the third alteration, 174, section 19. And speaking to Craig's point with respect to the roof lines, you know, basically, a homeowner was really restricted in being able to do what most of us would consider to be a needed repair to a pre-existing non-conforming structure. And as long as it doesn't increase the density or increase the non-conformity, is a better way to say it, then, then I think that, I, I think this'll, this works for the framework that we need. It works better.
Right.
Let's put it that way.
Yeah.
I think it, it, it does seem to be just attempting to make it a lot clearer.
Extension, reconstruction, or structural change to a structure which complies with current setbacks, lot coverage, building heights, but is located on a lot with insufficient area, but the alteration will also comply with certain requirements, you know. It, it just speaks, it adds a little bit more descriptive language for us as a board to be able to say, no, this is good, right?
Well, and quite honestly, it adds, adds it for the-
Building department.
Building department to be able to say-
So, it doesn't even get to us.
So, that it doesn't have to get to us.
That's exactly right, that's the point.
Anybody else have comments or questions?
I was going to say, minor point, but is the, is the use of structure in 174-9E correct? Or should that be, in fact, structural? Since it's modifying change.
I, actually, I think it was probably my mis, misstate of structural change, because you see further in that sentence about non-conforming uses, structures and lots. So, a structure change, although not, not impacting the non-conformity? I think that's kind of the, the example of the roof, that that structure had-
Yeah, I'm, to me, otherwise, structure change sounds like it should be structural. The very first, the very-
Very first, oh, God, okay.
174-9-
It's like, where is he reading from?
Yeah.
What line are you on?
The second.
The second-
First section.
Part of the center line. Period. The second-
Reconstruction or otherwise-
Reconstruction or otherwise, structure change. I'm just questioning if that should be structural.
Special permits may be issued for the extension, alteration, reconstruction, or otherwise struc- I see both, but-
But I, and then I see further in the same paragraph, otherwise structural change.
Yeah, I think it might make sense to have it consistent.
All right.
I have one question. What if the use of the structure changes? Do you recall we had a garage or something that was to be made into a living space?
A carport made into a garage.
Yeah, remember that.
Right, does, does this alleviate that? Does this address that in any way?
That's a good question.
Trying to remember the case. It's the gentleman, he had a garage, but-
He had a carport, it was a carport.
He wasn't making it a living area, though.
No, he was making it an enclosed garage.
He was keeping the exact same outer dimensions, just putting up walls.
Is he adding to the non-conformity, though, at that point?
Yeah, I think-
If you change the roof line, so, like, let's say if you had a flat roof, and then you went-
I don't think he was changing the roof line.
What's that?
I don't think he was changing the roof line.
No, I'm just saying hypothetically.
Right, right.
So, if you had a flat roof, and instead now you're on a pre-existing non-conforming lot, and now you're adding like a dormer, or, you know, let's just say you wanted to add a substantial amount of space where the roof overhangs?
Yeah, then your overhang would go up further than the flat roof would, and that would be, that would be a further, a, a more egregious-
Impact on the non-conformity.
Yeah, it would increase the non-conformity.
Before you didn't have the half-story, and then you're changing it, and then you're putting a half-story, and have storage up there, well, that, that is a significant-
I would think so.
That's a significant change, then. You're not just going from a carport with a roof, you're going to a, to a half-story that is now usable, you create an extra square footage of living space.
I mean, and there's other factors, it'd be hard to say. I mean, if you put a roof on it, does that change your average height? Where maybe that creates an issue in the conform, you know?
No, that's where I wanted to make sure, like, oh, it's changing the overhang, or it's just the height.
Right, but if you pitch it instead of flat, you know, maybe you were expecting that flat roof to help with your average height, that require, that didn't require a height variance.
Yeah.
So, you know, it'll depend.
I think it will.
We'll know when one comes in front of us.
Right.
We will.
I think it is addressed, though.
I was against this, though. Get the tapes.
Do you believe that structure and structural mean the same thing? Or should, you agree that-
No, I, um-
They mean two different things entirely?
I, I think they do mean two different things. I think I was just saying, I used the word structural when I first said it, even though it said structure.
Yeah, so, for consistency, or maybe you need that both?
No, I think for consistency, it should be-
Structural, yeah.
Well, both, meaning both. Meaning both, structure and structural.
I think a, a structure change is covered in alteration.
Absolutely.
So, I think it should be structural, and we've, we've noted that.
Do we vote on this?
We need to vote as to whether or not we support it.
Make a motion to support the amendment to the zoning bylaws as drafted, with the change to the structural provision.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Great, thank you, Doris. Okay, so that is that. The only other thing on here is the next meeting being February 12th. Everybody check the calendar, make sure you are available. We moved it up a week because of school break.
I'm not available, I booked the Wednesdays.
Pardon?
I, I'm in Florida.
Oh, that week?
Yeah.
Oh, that's fine. I thought you said you booked Wednesdays, I'm like, okay, Doris, that's going to be a problem.
No, we got a problem.
No, I open my Wednesdays, and, for the third week of the month.
Okay.
So, I didn't know it was a shift, but-
Yep, occasionally, we will have to shift. And just so you're aware, if a- Occasionally, we will have to shift, and just so you're aware, if a larger project comes in, kind of as we saw with Park Central, it could involve multiple meetings in a month. In general, we try to keep it to just one. So, if it's normal, kind of business as usual for us.
Do we, do we currently have anything significant on the agenda that evening?
I was just about to ask Katie what we had going on for February.
Yeah. We do have one hearing scheduled. It's pretty straightforward. Saint Mark's bought a property on Main Street that was a two-family, but hasn't been used that way in over two years, so according to the town code, they need to come for a special permit to move it back into a multifamily, and that's it.
Okay.
So, Wednesday, February twelfth, seven p.m.
Wednesday the twelfth, seven p.m. We have one thing on the agenda, and then approve minutes, and... Do we know when the Planning Board is having the hearing for the...
Yeah, so the hearing is January twenty-seventh here, I think at seven o'clock. It might be earlier, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but this has already been posted as needed to have the, hold the public hearing, so whoever wants to come should probably go. Craig and I will be there.
Are we?
Monday, Monday night.
In case you didn't know, Craig.
I do have it in an email.
I think, I know, I, I'm sure I said it. Cool, I did not book anything else yet.
You said the twenty-seventh, Katie?
Twenty-seventh.
At seven?
I think so.
So, that is one of the things that, we can all go. We're not there as a board. We're not planning on voting on anything. It will not violate open meeting laws, because it's a public hearing for something in our town, and we're all entitled to be there.
Attending as citizens.
Attending as citizens. I will attend as the zoning board chair, but no one else is there, and we won't have any meeting or anything to discuss it, so... So, January twelfth seventh, that'll be exciting, and then February twelfth, which we have one thing, so it'll be a relatively quick meeting again, which we like.
My turn now?
I think it's your turn.
Paul.
We're all looking. I'm good at this, by the way.